Just on my.
Well, I knew it was gonna be set to Arctic, so I thought I'd wear a parka.
I think it is. My room is set to B four because it's seventy two. It starts there. Well, unless I get to school too early and then it's not made its way back down to seventy two yet because it goes to high.
Do they turn it off? For our station to turn it.
Schools turn off at six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Not off.
Four o'clock at like nine.
Well, let me turn the flashers off at five.
I hate it.
They should just turn it on, not off.
No, they turn them off.
That's crazy.
I was like, wouldn't it be better if they just, if you just hung three walls off?
Well.
And then help it stand and put a big center wall.
That would be more efficient.
And I get mugged every day because I'm on an outside wall. But I'm on a outside wall, so they won't put a base split in there. It's like all across the hall for me. He's twenty-two years old having a base split. I'm over there like sweating out. I just moved in here on a portable building, which I love. I loved having my own air conditioner. But I miss being in this, the best part of the day of being in this room.
Well, I don't know.
Well, I just burned them all. They maybe doesn't come from them. They gave them all where the whole area didn't go out of outside.
Would you put that microphone down there?
Do you bring your microphone?
Oh. Uh, we got it sorted. We can get started.
Call this meeting with Windsboro City Council to order at five thirty-three P M. I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening. If you have a cell phone, please silence it or turn it off so it doesn't interrupt the meeting. If you need to take a phone call, please step out in the lobby or outside so it cannot interrupt the meeting. And uh, if you are speaking or addressing the council, please come forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And please do not speak out from your seat. Okay, so at this time, I'll establish a role starting to my right. Foreman here.
Moore here.
Bachelor here.
King here.
Hollowell here.
Let the record reflect the comments. The council is present. Also let the record reflect the agenda of this meeting was supposed to be seventy-two hours in advance. This time, I'd like to ask everybody to stand, please, before our invitations will be delivered by Councilman Hollowell.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this, giving us another day and all your blessings that go with it. We thank you for this opportunity to get together and discuss and deliberate in the business of Windsboro. We ask that you give us the knowledge and wisdom we need to make the best decisions for the whole of Windsboro. In Christ's name and prayer.
Joining the pledges. To the American flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To the Texas flag, honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Moving on to item number four in our agenda, presentations and announcements. Uh, four point ones, a proclamation for Assistant Living Week. On Monday, I did issue a proclamation designating this week, September seventh through the thirteenth, as Assistant Living, as Assistant Living Week. I presented that comment, uh, automatically as Assistant Living. And we are just recognizing this for the record. Also, at this time, we have a service recognition we would like to do. Council and everyone here, I don't think everybody fully understands the dedication our city employees give to the city and the work they uh, do in the city on daily basis. We have one person here who has gone above and beyond multiple times. They have been in the ditches, they've been in the holes, they have uh, done so much for this city over their tenure here at the city. So, at this time, I would like to ask Skip Parker to come forward. Anybody in Windsboro that doesn't know who Skip is, you're not really from Windsboro, okay? Skip has been with Fire Department, Skip has been in the Public Works, the Water Department, the Maintenance Department, everything in this city. Now he's our Public Works Director, but he has literally done everything in this city. Uh, he has made the water come back on, he has fixed sewer blockages, he has done everything. And he's been doing it for twenty years for the city of Windsboro. So Skip, in honor of your dedication and service to the city of Windsboro for twenty years, we want to present you with this service award. Wait a minute, you have a five-minute speech you have to give. All right, the next item on our agenda is public comments. This is a section where the public may address the city council on any subject. However, the Texas Open Meeting Act prohibits the city council from discussing these issues when the public has not been given seventy-two hours notice. The act is not entitled to vote to choose the items to be discussed or to speak about any items on the agenda. Those wishing to address the items not on the agenda may do so at this time, however, the council shall refrain from all comments and may, at their discretion, refer the item for research, resolution, or future agenda item. So I have uh, two for public comments. I have a Daisy Lemmons. Would you like to come forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record?
Good evening. My name is Daisy Jones Lemons. I live at four hundred North Beach Street, apartment one thirteen Windsboro. I was gonna say, good evening. How about this cool morning weather and not ninety degrees afternoon? I know I have a, I only have three minutes, so I'll hurry up. Uh, I was born in Amaro, Texas, raised in Windsboro, graduated from Windsboro High School, yeah, Red Raiders. Uh, moved to Tyler, graduated from Texas College, and lived there for fifty-three years, retired, and moved back to Windsboro. My heart hurts when I drive through my old community and see the weeds, the trees, the brushes. Just to name a few streets, Pine Street, Carver Street, Washington, Lincoln, Apple. My sister and I used to walk for exercise, and we reminisced about how it used to be, our community. Donbar Historical Marker, I was asked, where is Donbar? You know, I've been hearing about it. I didn't get to come back up here to see it. She said, there it is. I said, where? And I, I had to literally look because the weeds were so high. I tried to show, my son wanted to know where I grew up, going to school. And I showed him and he was the same way. Well, well, Mom, where, where is it? I says, it's right there. On Pine Street, when you're coming off out of my apartment complex, the leaves, there's a big pothole. I hope that can be addressed. Um, they're coming down the street really fast and, you know, it's just like boom, boom, boom. And you go on down on Pine Street, past Conne May Drive, the road is caving in on the right side. Now, if you're driving at night, you could actually drive off the road, and it's pretty deep. So I, I really hope that's addressed. They did put some concrete down there, but you and I know that the first big rain is probably gonna be washed out. We are hoping to bring some of these things to the committee's attention so that we can get some improvements done, if you can. I don't know whose job it is, but we're just putting it out there. Also, there's a house falling down on Pine Street. The, the mailbox is full, it's overflowing, but this house is falling down. It's up on Pine Street next to the Church of Christ, uh, church. The Martin Luther King Park is nice, they've been keeping it mowed, but it needs a fence or something on the back because when kids are playing and when they kick a ball and go down to that ravine, you know, it could be some snakes or something down there. But if we could get a fence put up there, that would be nice. And I hope you enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you.
Okay, the next one is, is Duffy.
Good evening, council members. I'm Marsha Duffy. I live at one twelve Orange Street here in Windsboro, born and raised. And this is just an invitation to the public. Uh, hype, finally got our building done, our bathroom built, and we are ready to rock and roll. So we will be having a slight soft opening next weekend on the twentieth, uh, from, starting at ten o'clock. And we will be serving free hot dogs to the public, so we hope all y'all can come out.
Skip's eyes just lit up back there when you said that. Oh, Marsha?
Yes.
Where is that at? That's at Conne May.
Uh, that's at two two one Conne May Drive.
All right, say no further com- uh, people signed in for public comments. We'll move on to our, uh, next item. Six, six point ones are consent items. Council, your package, you'll find your minutes from the last meeting, your financials, and your staff reports. Is there any staff present that would like to add anything to their reports as submitted to the council? Tanya, is there anything you'd like to add to the financials or anything?
No, actually, there's, I don't think there's a traditional report this month. Because of our new posting laws, we're barely at the beginning of the month before we have to do that, and I don't really have time to do the current month now. So you already got last month, there'll, there'll now be one month in a row, which is the only way that I can get them to you. Um, and so you've already approved that one, so I didn't really need to do it at all.
Okay. Yeah, uh, for those who aren't familiar, the posting requirements changed for local government effective September first. It now has to be posted seventy-two business hours in advance. So it has to be posted about mid-Windski.
Now?
Whereas we had been posting in practice. Okay, council, any questions about the consent items presented? Hearing none, I'll adjourn motion. Have a motion. We'll hear a second.
Second.
I have a motion to second. Any further discussion from the council? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Item seven point one, action to approve appointment of Dawn Petty to the Main Street Board. Who is here to speak on that? Carolyn? And Ms. Petty is here with us, right there on the front row, so council, if you have any questions for her, she's here to answer any questions you may have.
Good evening, council. Um, as you know, I am enlarging the Main Street Board according to its bylaws. It allows for up to nine members. I currently have four seated members. Uh, in fact, Ms. Moray has applied to be a member of the board, made the request for an application, so I am increasing that so that it's not such a heavy lift for any single volunteer. And it will give us a more active and more advocacy role in the community if we have more Main Street people downtown talking to the people who are here. But I'd like to introduce you to Dawn Petty. Um, she is, has been approved by the Main Street Board today and is anxious to join our ranks with your approval.
Council, any other questions? Or Carolyn, or Ms. Petty? Ms. Petty, you have anything you'd like to say? Yeah, I'm gonna put you on the spot.
I would just like to say thank you for, um, considering me for this position, and I'm very excited to get started on the Main Street Board. My husband and I have been here for sixteen years. Um, even though we didn't grow up in Windsboro, we want our roots to stay here. And, um, I'm very excited about all the things that Carolyn has going on, and so I just, I appreciate your time. And, um, hope we can do some good things together.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you.
Council, adjourned to a motion.
I move to approve Dawn Petty to the Main Street Board.
Have a motion, but hear a second.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilor Hollowell, second by Councilman Foreman. Any further discussion from the council? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Item seven point two, public hearing, seeing testimony regarding rezoning request with Johnny Andrea Newsom. We'll go ahead and open this public meeting at five forty-five P M. Is there anyone present that would like to speak during the public hearing on this matter? Ms. Newsom, I see you have signed to speak during this time, so if you'd like to come forward, you know the drill.
Uh, Adrian Newsom, seven oh nine West Broadway. Um, the parcel of land we're talking about is seven oh seven, uh, West Broadway, which is right beside our house. Um, on the other side, you have, of course, Team Worldwide. Um, I talked to them privately because in this, they had no problem. And I also talked to Ms. [inaudible]. Um, even, uh, Marty Dunn is one of the people between the team and our family, telling us of clearing the gutter that is there, [inaudible] ditch, we cleared it all the way to the end. And it's our [inaudible]. Um, the reason we want this, we want to rezone like with our house. Um, is because we plan on building a fourteen hundred square foot, which I think is the minimum here in Windsboro. Don't quote me on that if I'm wrong. Um, for my daughter, and she is expecting our grandchild, and we that's the reason for the request. Um, if anybody has questions, you know, or concerns, I'd be happy to address them if I need to, or if y'all have questions? Happy to answer them.
Council, any other question?
Oh, we do already have, um, tech stocks approval because regardless, we want a driveway to that property. We have tech stocks approval for the driveway, the culvert that needs to be put in. And then SWPCO is putting in new power lines, I guess, right through all that, Team Worldwide ourselves. And some of the ones that were damaged during the storm a couple of years ago. And so, it just happens they're putting one on that property without even us asking or anything, so the power will be, will be already supplied there as well.
So we're going from commercial to residential, that's what we're?
Well, what it is, is the same as my house. My house is a, [inaudible]. Whatever, mine's commercial, but then it also has residential combined.
Next use.
And so, while we could, we could ask, I'm asking for us to rezone that one piece of property to be just like my house. Now, I did go to the, um, Franklin County because Franklin County shows both the pieces of property already that way. But the city has owned that piece of property, it's just commercial. So that's why I, and I could honestly, they said I could join the properties together, but I kind of want hers kept separate because I'm gonna make her pay taxes and stuff on hers. Because if, they said if I joined them together, basically it would grandfather in that land with mine. But I'd really rather not do that unless I absolutely had to. I'd rather come to the city and ask for a rezoning.
Um, I have a question. The house is gonna be fourteen hundred square feet?
Mm-hmm.
Is that gonna be on a slab or is it?
Uh, it's gonna be pier and bean.
Gonna be pier and bean?
It's gonna be a little two-bedroom house. It's not gonna be anything great. I mean, it's gonna be wood frame.
It's not gonna, is it tiny house or?
It's not a tiny house because, we look at those, but then when I look for what the city has to have in the, um, for, in the residence of the city of Windsboro, it has to be a fourteen hundred foot home, not a tiny house. A tiny house can't be put on there. And I don't think she would like the tiny house.
Council, any other question? Okay, that came here. Is there anyone else? Well, we'll get to that when we can. Yes, ma'am, you can come up here and the public comment. Is it regarding this particular piece of property?
Hi, my name is Anna Paulasheek, and, um, I'd like to comment, um, about the requirements of fourteen hundred square foot, uh, the minimum. I do believe for future purposes, the council should consider review that.
Okay, I have to stop you because that's not pertaining specifically to this property we're in public hearing on.
Right, right, right. Okay, okay, just, just to be considered. Thank you.
Hey, is there anyone else that'd like to speak on this matter? Okay, say no one else come forward. We'll close the public hearing at five fifty P M and move on to the, uh, action. Mackenzie, do you have anything you'd like to? Okay. I, I do know in nineteen thirty, or, um, the first rezoning orders were passed in Windsboro that redefined all the zoning ordinances. Uh, redefining things, and as you can see, looking at the map we have here, Ms. Newsom's house is existing in a B two, um, zone. But at the time of that order being passed, anything that was in that zone was grandfathered. But the minute that property stops being used or in the intention that it currently is under, say the house went away. It reverts immediately back to a business, or business, uh, zone. But I believe you have some real insights to the laws and anything else we need to consider?
I'll answer any questions you'd like to ask. What implications would there be if we allow the one that's [inaudible] without making it part of hers, to allow it separate from her?
It wouldn't be granted.
Right, but if we have to change for that to happen, then what implications would that make for other areas of the city, their own businesses? We just have the president, uh, if we know that as residential, other people paint that we're in different zones and asking the same thing, uh, that the president has, or maybe we all would be.
Would it be more beneficial to instead of rezoning, [inaudible]? Okay?
You can't do a non-compliment ahead of time. And so if you look at the [inaudible] that I gave you, I think it's one seven eight five, this property, that's a question. It's right on the border of the purple and blue zone. So what would happen if you gotta rezone that residential, that one seven eight five would no longer be purple or blue, it would change to the green zone. Then you would have what's considered a zoning law, a spot zone.
Even across the alley?
That's correct. It's the first two hundred feet and everything on Broadway is zone for business.
The spot zone.
The one part would just be, so it would turn green and that one would have to be labeled S F two. S F two, uh, so then that, just that one particular lot would be considered spot zoning. Spot zoning means that it's inconsistent with everything else that's in that area.
Have we done that elsewhere?
No, but I've seen, since I've painted, no. I wouldn't do a lot of these either. But cheap properties currently, it's actually considered legal and voluntary use, which means that it can stay as it is, but any cheaper development or any change in use, as the mayor said, would have to adhere to the current zone. Unless you all choose to keep on the mound.
So S F two is residential?
Council, any other questions? I know that will.
I just wanted to point out that going by the county, that piece of land is already zoned exactly like mine. They said it had to have been something with the city zoning, not the county zoning. Because I called and asked them, would I need like a permit from the, the county? And they said it's already zoned what you want it to be, so there's nothing to do here with the county. That's the city function, so. As far as the county's concerned, it's already zoned that way.
Yeah.
So she's correct, that it's, I think you mentioned that, that's the Kathy and I told Franklin County. What they said, or what they told me they said, was that it is being appraised as residential, not zone, because it controls the zone, the county doesn't. So what, if the property is appraised as a residential property, it's not going to be used. So it would be like, as you said, the appraisal district would not change the appraisal code until that new seeps to exist and the new commercial use started on that property.
Because there was a house there.
There's a lot of houses there.
Yeah, I, I, I could.
I've heard there's houses.
Taken down or whatever.
So if, if we left it alive, I don't know what she's gonna build up there. I have a question. So like, what happens if her house sort of burned down? Would she not be able to build, building the house that?
There's a fifty percent roll.
James, Andrew?
There's a fifty percent roll.
You need to find a new.
Hold up a minute.
It's, I think [inaudible].
Do those people know that?
Correct me if I'm wrong, there's something about an act of thought, it's just two orders, you should worry about an act of thought, then there's a new [inaudible].
Don't call the fire department immediately. Councilman King, I must remind you, we are on the record.
I'm probably on the record, that's crazy.
And, and really, that's why they, they told me that I could put the piece of properties together, and then that way when I, because I do own both, of course. And so when I did that, that would grandfather that piece of property in to my, my, because it'll be on one property at that point. But I'd just rather keep them separate.
Would you want her to pay the taxes?
Yes, I want her to pay the taxes. That's why, my daughter, she's the one that'll be.
Just charge her rent.
I'm in there desiring to do that, but it would sure be a whole lot easier.
But it's gonna cost me a whole lot more money.
Also, you cannot have two residential buildings on one lot.
Yeah.
So she combines them together, has to have a [inaudible].
Sure wasn't helpful.
I know.
I don't want to do something that's not [inaudible].
I know, that's why I'm, and I'm trying to do this exactly [inaudible].
Basically, if a piece of property was being used as residential, if held to a business district, it would remain residential until such time as its [inaudible] ceased. And it would revert back to the business, the business. That's, yeah, that's the council's.
Yeah, I mean, you guys can, you guys can spot zone. The only time it's really going to be an issue in the future is if someone comes and asks for a spot zone, and you tell them no. If they don't like that answer, then it's a little, [inaudible]. There, there are no zoning points, there are [inaudible].
Council, any other questions? Okay, council, if there is nothing further, I'll adjourn to a motion.
I'll move to approve the rezone request at seven oh seven West Broadway from B two to S F two.
Have a motion, do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
I second the motion.
I have a motion to second. Any further discussion from the council?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'll have to table this issue until we could all learn a little bit more about what this nineteen ninety-three zoning issue has to do with.
That's why I said, do we need an executive?
Okay. Actually, we've already gone past that, but. So council, I have a recommendation. Can you make a motion to pass this?
Yeah, I said, I move to table.
If there's a motion on the table, we need to take a vote on that motion, and then if the IG will make the motion.
Exactly. So the original motion to approve?
I don't think that's correct. I think if you have a main motion, this is a, a table is a secondary motion. So we have our main motion. We made a motion and a second to approve. I think if you have a main motion, this is a, a table is a secondary motion, so we have our main motion, we made a motion and a second to approve it. The secondary motion is that I move to table this motion until we can get, until next meeting. I am, I teach this in class.
But after we deal with your amended motion, then what I have to do with the secondary?
It's not amended, it's to table.
So with your secondary motion, then I have to do with your original motion?
It's just to vote, to table it, 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 yes.
Okay. So, on the second motion, to pass this to the next item, or the next agenda for more research, I have a motion, do I hear a second? I have a second? Any other discussion on the second motion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Secondary motion passes, on the original motion to approve the request, I have a motion to second?
It was just, we tabled it, once we table it, that is tabled.
Nullified.
To the next meeting.
Now you put up one bit, my, my understanding is there's a difference between just table and postpone, I think what you're asking is to postpone this to the next meeting, not table it.
That is, yes, we can do that, that's well, we just tabled it till the next meeting, which means we bring it back back into discussion.
Okay, we're not going, we're not gonna keep discussing back and forth parliamentary, we're gonna pass it to the next agenda, and for some more research, okay?
I'll look into the parliamentary procedure too. There is.
Okay, so, this will be on the next agenda item after some more research for the motion handled. Okay, moving on to our next item, item seven point four, is action on a three eighty ring from Shelley Bullock, Wentworth Dairy Queen. Mackenzie, do you have anything you need to add to this?
Uh, it just said the E D C approves a business for Shelley Bullock to help offset some of the maintenance costs that she did to repay the parking lot at the Dairy Queen, to renew the roof structure.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the three eighty agreement between Winsboro Economic Development Corporation and Shelley Bul, Bullock for Roof Repairs, seven hundred South Main Street.
I have a, I have a motion to second? Any further discussion from the council? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Item seven point five, the incentive request from Bill Zimmer advertising funds through the Taste of Winsboro event. Again, this is an E D C agreement coming towards approval, Mackenzie, do you have anything to add to this?
I'm gonna defer to Ms. Snout, she's been working very closely with the director.
Okay. Kara, if you'd come forward. The first thing that I noticed on here is there's no amount, Mackenzie.
That's what I was gonna say, no amount, no signatures.
That was a five thousand dollar request of the E D C for advertising funds, the estimated expenditure for Taste of Winsboro in advertising is nine thousand five hundred dollars. And they had asked for five hundred dollars essent, essentially reimbursement help from the E D C.
Five hundred or five?
Five thousand, I'm sorry, five thousand dollars.
So the request is five thousand dollars?
That's correct.
Counsel, any other questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the M O U between the city and the.
No, that's the one, that's the one above it.
That's the one above it?
Yeah, seven five.
We're on seven five?
Uh-huh.
Oh, okay, then I move to approve the incentive request from Bill Zimmer, as stated.
In the amount of?
Five thousand dollars.
I have a motion to approve the incentive agreement in the amount of five thousand dollars, do I hear a second? I have a motion to second, any further discussion from the council?
I already bought my ticket, y'all go buy yours.
Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries, the amount of five thousand dollars.
I'm just gonna say for the record that Ms. Lyons was correct, it should have been a postponed.
Item seven point six, M O U with the Economic Development Corporation. Uh, counsel, this is a M O U between the Head Town Development Corporation and the City of Winsboro. Uh, Mackenzie's gonna let you speak on this, kinda, go in what we're doing.
This M O U covers the resurfacing of all of the floors, just bringing them back to the, the natural. Just bringing them back to their natural state, um, and also to, it puts an elevator in and it's replacing all of the windows in, in the building. You all approved in the fee schedule a couple of months back to lease the space upstairs for one oh one to start producing some income and providing a service to the community in that way. And this will just help prepare the space for those rentals.
And then on this M O U, is this a grant or are we going to repay back to the E D C?
The agreement, the agreement with the M O U is that any lease money that we receive from the rentals are repaid to the E D C until the total amount is repaid in full, not to exceed two years.
Okay, counsel, any other questions, Mackenzie? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the M O U between the Economic Development Corporation and the City of Winsboro.
I have a motion, do I hear a second? I have a motion to second, any further discussion from the council? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries. Item seven point eight, no, I'm sorry, item seven point seven, action to approve an E D C board member appointment. This is the action required to officially appoint Councilman King to fill the unexpired term, which will expire October twenty twenty six, is that correct, Mackenzie?
Yes.
Holly's nodding, so we'll.
Yes, it is.
Okay, counsel, any questions regarding this matter? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the appointment of Trevor King to the E D C board to fill place two, that expired term to expire in October twenty twenty six.
I have a motion, do I hear a second? I have a motion to second, any further discussion from the council? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Another Tuesday.
Item seven point eight, discuss the appointment policy and or take action to appoint a council class member to fill E D C board place number two. Wait a minute. Yes, that's what the agenda says. Okay, corrections, discuss the appointment policy and or take action to appoint a council class member to fill E D C board place number one, currently held by Jim Hollowell, expiring September thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Mackenzie?
Just looking for some direction from the, from the council on how you'd like to move forward with the appointment, specifically when it's a council member class. If you all want to follow the same process that has been followed when it's not a council member class, which is you provide applica, uh, you fill out an application for your seat, you submit proof that's, you know, just kind of a basic resume to give the board an idea of who you are, and then they do interviews. You go through a scoring process, and then the E D C board makes a recommendation to the council for these. The question was raised, since it's a council member class, do we still want to continue to allow the E D C to make that recommendation to council, or does the council want to just do that on their own?
I personally would like it to be supplied, um, you send those to the law council, I need to.
I agree.
The, the, I will bring this up, the Texas local government does not allow the E D C to make a recommendation to a council, per board point, there's no permission to ask the council, it is ultimate approval authority. So, we do, if we wanna go through that, then that's a, that's a process we can take on, but I want the council to be aware of the law, we just, uh, and we're just finding all the sound.
But it's not actually the E D C, uh, where it's being started, which is, uh, we, uh, we, uh, we have to actually, you know.
So we're just saying that we're putting it in the hands of the committee to do a, to follow the procedures that we put in place.
Yes, sir.
Not necessarily the E D C, but we're putting it in the hands of the committee.
Okay.
We keep, we can mention it, of one of those, that's, is also.
Yes. So we went through an application process for this last term, and then an interview as well, that was with the Main Street Coordinator, HR Director, and a few E D C members.
Okay, counsel, any other questions or discussion? Okay, this is a non-action item, so Mackenzie, you have your direction from the majority of the council. Item seven point nine, action on resolution twenty twenty five dash fourteen, nominating candidates for the Winsboro, or for the Wood County Appraisal District Board of Directors, I don't even have a list of the candidates. Or who is up for the candidates. Okay, well, we're gonna start with, how you spell Norman? And counsel, we do not have to make a nomination, we can choose. Hey, counsel, any nominations to be heard? There are no nominations, we're going on some that nomination, that resolution does. Item seven point ten, action on resolution twenty twenty four dash oh one A two, authorizing vague signatories on cities, city and E D C accounts. This is the resolution to update the signatories on the bank accounts, including myself as mayor, uh, Councilman J. Thatcher as mayor of Proton. Mackenzie Lyons, the city administrator, Holly Parker, city secretary, and Austin, Austin as finance director. Counsel, any questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash zero one A two, authorizing back signature for Winsboro city and E D C accounts.
I have a motion, go hear a second. Oh, I'm sorry, did you finish?
Now I have.
Okay. I'm jumping the gun tonight. I have a motion, go hear a second.
I say then.
We're gonna give counsel more English, I heard her. So I have a motion to second, any further discussion from the council? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Item seven point one one, action on right-of-way request from Swepco. Mackenzie, you're skipped, y'all have me in that, she pointed you, Skip, you're up.
New park, City of Winsboro? Yeah. You caught me once, a few times, laughed it off, I was actually speechless, I wasn't expecting all that, so now y'all get to fool me. So, um, they're wanting to, Swepco's wanting to amend a little bit of what the right-of-way is up on the Apple Street office inside the fence. And from what the best I can tell is they're wanting to put metal poles where the wooden poles are. But, uh, I want them to specifically outline what they wanna do on our property before we give the okay, so if it pleases the council, I'd like for y'all to give permission upon my recommendation to accept their offer to Mackenzie, that way she can do it. Because my meeting is on September nineteenth with them. That was the quickest they could do it, so if you have any questions about it, it's, it's pretty cut and dry, I don't know if we have the paper up here, but it's just basically, there you go, yeah. Uh, I wanna see exactly how much they want, what they wanna do, what they want access to, and, and how much of it's gonna be any kind of liability for us, fence moving or water line moving. I don't wanna get into any of that stuff with them, I just want them to be able to move their stuff, I wanna show them what we got, and see what they wanna go on and have them move their stuff to suit us, since the, uh, right-of-way's not really defined, so.
Okay. So what you're wanting the council to do is basically give permission at this time for me to execute this grant pending your approval?
Absolutely.
After September nineteenth.
Yes, sir.
But we're not executing it tonight.
Yes, sir.
We're not executing it.
Sir.
Okay. Is that aligned with everything, Mackenzie?
Sure, it's like, sure, whatever.
Okay, counsel, any other questions, Skip? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Do I have a motion?
Make sure.
Okay, we just postponed this till the October nineteenth, once everything's been done.
You can't make a motion with the power to act. That's what I was hoping to give the power to Mackenzie upon recommendation, for the meeting.
Well, this is a, this is a, this is a.
I see what it is, yeah.
This is a right-of-way, then.
Did you get all that?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the requ- quest. I missed the question. I moved, yeah, I move to authorize Skip's request. Is that right?
Approval.
Yeah.
Would it be okay to just make the motion, I recommended contingent on the request?
Granting me the authority to execute it.
I move to approve the request on the Swepco for additional right-of-way access on city-owned property on Apple Street at tax parcel fifty nine four seventy nine upon Skip's approval.
I second.
And then I not provide me to execute.
And authorizing Randy to execute.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to second, any further discussion from the council? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Item seven point twelve, open public hearing, receive testimony regarding proposed budget for fiscal year beginning in October one, twenty twenty five, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty six. We will open this public hearing at six fifteen P M. Is there anyone who'd like to come forward and speak regarding the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we'll close the public hearing at six fifteen P M. We'll on item seven thirteen, action on ordinance ten eighty nine dash twenty twenty five, adopting the budget for fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty five, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding this? I'll need to have anything you'd like to add.
I move to approve ordinance ten eighty nine dash twenty twenty five, adopting the budget for fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty five, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
I have a motion, do I hear a second? I have a motion to second, any further discussion from the council? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Item seven point one four, action to approve tax rate gratification for fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty five, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Counsel, or, on, or, Mackenzie, do you have anything to add to this?
The only thing I'll just add for the record for people who may not know this year, we are adopting the, or proposing the new revenue rate. So, only new revenue that we would be capturing in addition to what we did last year is returning.
An increase in property value?
Actually not increasing the property value, somewhat individual taxes may go up, the amount of total revenue you receive is the same except for the development. So someone could actually go down, their property value would down.
Mackenzie, do you have anything to add?
So ba, basically, it's a zero percent increase in the tax rate.
The tax rate is actually going down, but, yeah.
Yes, okay.
Okay. Okay, counsel, any further questions? This will be a called vote, so I will call each of you individually as we come to the vote, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that property tax rate be lowered to zero point five three five six dollars for all members of the operation.
I have a motion, go hear a second.
I say then.
I have a motion to second, any further discussion from the council? Councilwoman, how do you vote? Councilwoman Maury, how do you vote?
I go four, four, one, two, three, yeah, you said nay, you said.
I said yay.
Oh, you said yay, I thought you said nay, that just threw me.
Councilman Thatcher, how do you vote? Councilman King?
Yes.
Councilman Hollow?
Yay.
All vote aye, no, no no's, motion passes.
Actually, yeah, I thought you said nay.
Okay. Item on action, or item seven point one five, action on ordinance ten ninety dash twenty five, adopting the tax rate for fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty five, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Counsel, this is just to formalize the adoption of the tax rate, any questions? This will also be a called vote, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance ten ninety dash twenty five, adopting the tax rate for fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty five, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
I have a motion, go hear a second. I have a motion to second, any further discussion from the council? Hearing none, Councilwoman Borman?
Yay.
Councilwoman Maury?
Yay.
Councilman Thatcher? Councilman King?
Yay.
Councilman Hollow?
Yay.
All vote yay, no no's, motion passes. Item made, general discussion by councilor staff, council, do you have anything you would like to generally discuss?
Generally.
General, well, you know, within reason. General, well, you know, within reason. Okay, any staff have anything they'd like to add? Yes, sir.
Uh, just wanted to give a quick update on the conference that I will be attending next week. So next week is the Association for Rural and Small Libraries Conference in Albuquerque, New Mexico. And I will be giving two presentations at that conference. One is a poster board presentation on the Windsboro on Wheels event that we had here a couple of weekends ago. So I will be speaking on how the library, in collaboration with other community organizations, kind of just work together to put on this big event for the community. And the second is a group presentation that I will be doing with five other members of the Leadership Institute. And our topic on that is collaborations, or community collaborations, uh, as well. And for that, uh, portion, I will be speaking on the Teen Volunteer Impact Program that we launched at the library, which is a teen workforce readiness program. Uh, in which we, in exchange for their help in volunteering at the library, we offer, uh, different, I should say, kind of mini classes, workshops on resume building, public speaking, networking, and other, uh, professional, professional development opportunities. So, next week at that conference, I will be representing the library, representing Windsboro, and presenting on those two topics.
Okay, very good, thank you. And a member staff?
I'd just like to, uh, invite the council and the public out, the, uh, so Windsboro Police Department and Windsboro Fire Department will be participating in the national live out. This year will be October the seventh, we're gonna host it, the Christmas of the Branson Hospital has graciously offered their space. We're gonna have some bounce hours, and we're gonna have a potluck, we're gonna have some family fun kids, and, uh, have several different things, so invite, invite everybody to come out. That night, it will be from six to eight that night.
And what's the date on that again?
October the seventh.
Seven.
Free helicopter ride, right?
Only if you get the bounce house at me. Anything else? I see nothing else. The next regular city council meeting will be held October fourteenth, twenty twenty five, at five thirty here at the council chambers. Complete a request, deflection in the agenda must be turned into a city call no later than noon, eight days prior to the scheduled meeting. At this time, we'll stand adjourned at six point two in. Oh, Counselor Maureen Thatcher, since you are the mayor pro temp, I have to present you with my official.